Good morning and welcome to the East Brady Wine Township Board of Supervisors Work Section for Thursday, October 3rd, 2019. Just to remind you, a recording device will be used during this meeting. And I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for public comment for non-agenda items. Seeing none in the audience, I just wanted to note that our township solicitor, who I'm going next, is going to be joining us via conference call. And we're gonna go to an ordinance amending the portions of the East Brady Wine Township Code in Chapter 350. I'll turn it over to Kristin now.
Good morning, everybody. So this is an ordinance that's combining amendments to both your subdivision land development ordinance as well as your zoning ordinance. These changes came about as a result of previously changing how religious uses and educational uses are allowed in certain residential districts. So that's the zoning portion of it. You're now going to be allowing schools by conditional use in the R1 district and the R2 and the R3 district. There's also an amendment to the zoning regarding historic resource protection studies when they're required to clarify that provision. And then the changes to the subdivision land development ordinance deal with the sketch plan process, clarifying when the final plan should be recorded, and also clarifying the type of electronic, a digital copy of a plan that has to be submitted to the township for its archived records. Because it was an amendment to SALDO and zoning, there were certain procedures that the township had to go through before you could hold this hearing. The first is we had to advertise it, which we did in the daily local, September 12th and September 19th, and I do have a proof of publication indicating it was published. We also sent a copy of this ordinance to the Chester County Law Library for public inspection, as well as the daily local news. We sent it to the county planning commission. Originally, these amendments were in two separate ordinances. That's why we have two different review letters from the county planning. Both of those letters are dated August 27th, 2019. And you also had your own planning commission review and provide a recommendation. And at the meeting on September 4th, the planning commission recommended that the board adopt this ordinance. So we followed all the necessary procedural steps that's required under the municipal planning code, and I'd consider these, you know, housekeeping amendments to both of your codes. So if there's any questions on the ordinance, I'm happy to answer.
Anybody in the audience have any questions on the ordinance? Seeing none, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Okay. Mr. Winters isn't here, so...
All right. I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 07 of 2019.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're gonna go back on the record now and go to the minutes of the previous meeting. Board of Supervisors, September 17th, 2019, and September 19th, 2019.
I'll make a motion, we adopt as submitted the minutes of September 19th, September 17th and September 19th.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the planning commission, September 4th, 2019.
I'll make a motion, we approve as submitted the planning commission minutes of September 4th, 2019.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
And then, we have no old business this morning, so we'll move on to new business. The award of contract curbside collection of municipal solid waste, single stream recycling materials. I'll turn that over to Luke for that.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have an advertised request for proposals for the curbside collection of recycling and trash throughout the township. Second-class township requires, second-class township code requires that we do this at least every five years. We opened the bids at a public meeting late last Friday. We received three bids. The apparent low bidder is A.J. Blazinski of Elverson, Pennsylvania. For the base three-year period, they bid $1,330,602. The contents of their bid package have been reviewed by both the legal team and myself. And at this time, I'm prepared to recommend that we accept their proposal for the base three-year contract for the curbside collection of trash and recycling. Before, respectfully, before, we have two other items to discuss relative to this bid. The bid has, the base bid is constructed with a three-year base with two options to extend to years four and five before we meet the aforementioned five-year requirement to rebid in general. And then there were two bid options. One of the bid options was that the hauler could choose a destination for the recycled collected curbside at a materials recovery facility of their choice, or they could go with a materials recovery facility of the township's choice. I think we're gonna have a little bit longer conversation on the second option in this package, and that is the provision, assembly, and delivery of recycled carts. So, of the trash carts, excuse me. Forgive me for being so presumptuous here, but I think it's a bit of a no-brainer on where we route the recyclables to. There is a Chester County multi-municipal contract for recyclables. The current winner of that bid package is Total Recycling, which is operated by J.P. Mascaro. It's in Birdsboro, Pennsylvania, and the current cost per ton is $35.55. And so my recommendation would be that you accept the base bid for three years of collection, and you decline the first bid option, which was a materials recovery facility of the hauler's choice. We have a much longer conversation relative to those carts. But at this point, the hauler is present. If you have any questions from me or the hauler on the base bid and the first option, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have none.
Did we ever figure out, I know we were talking about this, where our current waste hauler was supplying totes for trash service for a lot of the residents? One, if those are to be returned, or two, if those are gonna put a different number in our packet?
Right. So, just for clarification, it has always been the township's policy that individual homeowners are responsible for receptacle for their trash in curbside. When Republic won the bid five years ago, they offered to residents a 96-gallon Republic Services branded cart to a number of residents. Who took them up on that? The representative of Republic Services was present at the bid opening on Friday, and I asked that question. I have not heard back on what their intent is. I think it's entirely within their rights to, on January 1st or on the last collection of December, take all of those carts back, at which point we will have residents with a great deal of questions.
Perhaps it's better that we put that in writing right now to them to say, if you wish for these trashcans to be returned, we need to know so immediately, and we won't have that problem. But I'm more, I guess what I'm getting at is, I see at least one out of every four houses has one of those now. So it seems like they've been delivering a ton of those. I saw the guys on the weekend with a giant truck a couple years, about a year ago, dropping those things off in a giant, giant flatbed. So it seemed like it was more in their favor. And then it goes back to the next part of this equation, which is, if we're supplying trashcans for residents, and it's a convenience factor for the hauler, are they basing their number, and maybe you said this, I didn't hear it, are they basing their number off of a toter pickup, or are they basing their number off of a regular trashcan pickup?
No. I won't speak for what was in the mind of the three bidders when they bid it, but I think it, I will say in general, when we phrase the purchase of recycle carts as an option that we will consider, I think that the conservative thing for the hauler to do is bid out as status quo and assume that that option won't be exercised. So in other words, you know, you say, oh, well, is this an automation-ready township or not? Well, we very well may be early into the first quarter of 2020, but there's a chance we won't be. So if we're gonna bid a three-year program, let's assume it's not. So I don't think, and what we bid out was status quo. We did express our intent to become automation-ready.
Because that makes a huge difference for them. They went from, in the early programs start with Republic, they went from two guys per truck, and now they're down to one guy per truck. So clearly, they're saving money by doing it that way, and is it more in their benefit or our benefit? It's saving them money, not necessarily the residents.
Well, I have noticed that the Republic truck uses the arm to pick up toters other than the ones that they've supplied. So maybe, and maybe you can answer that question, maybe it doesn't make that much difference whether it's, maybe better if it's a designed toter for that arm implement on the truck, but it seems like they can pick up almost anything.
I'm sorry. Can I have you come up to the lectern since we do record these meetings and I need to...
And identify yourself, please.
Jim Clark from A.J. Blazinski. They do, it does make a difference on what type of container that the arm does pick up. It can pick up both of them. We actually saw last week, we saw that Republic was picking those other containers up other than the 96-gallon toters, but they looked like they were damaging them from our observation. There was a few of them that we saw, and we only did a spot check of them, that they were crushing the containers. So we don't really recommend doing that. Our price was, like Luke said, our price was built in the fact that we would do it rear-load, but we're capable of doing it because we have all the equipment to do it either way. We have ASL trucks that we can do it. Like the recycling, looks like there's containers out there. We can do the recycling using the ASL arm, or if you do choose to go with the route of, you know, purchasing the toters, we can do it that way also. We have the equipment, like I said, to do it either way. But the best way to do it is probably with the containers that aren't designed, the heavy-duty containers, is to do it rear-load. But there are some, like you said, about a quarter of them that are already toter that can handle the ASL arm.
So with your ASL arm, are you bringing two guys in a truck, or are you bringing one guy in it?
One guy.
Okay, so, and this is where I'm trying to get, what is, and this might be better suited for Luke, what is our complaint ratio for trashcans being crushed? Have we gotten any? Has there been a couple? I mean, if it's, somebody said to us, well, once a year that their trashcan was damaged, I don't think that that's a bad number.
So you're asking how many private purchase carts have been destroyed at collection?
Correct, correct.
That is an infrequent, maybe one a quarter? And I'd say that's, but we also need to bear in mind that unless we're talking about something with a somewhat robust perimeter and a hinged lid, they would not use a hydraulic overhand arm to collect it. Because the lid would fall in, and, or you would crush the cart.
No, so what he's doing, because I have one of each, he's actually knocking the lid off and then picking it up with the arm. So, and I'm trying to make this as beneficial for us as you guys as well. I mean, because again, if half of our residents in the beginning of this program roll out regular trashcans and the toters, well, then you're gonna be bringing two trucks, or are you gonna bring one truck and just put the toters in manually? How would you guys do that if that were the case?
Well, currently, the way we, it's designed right now, the way you have it set up is that we would just, we would just bring a rear-load truck to do the trash. That way, we don't damage any of the containers and stuff like that. We're pretty particular like that on that. We wouldn't do it the way they were doing it because I would, I mean, I know Anthony wouldn't accept the fact that these containers look like they were damaged, and I just don't, it's just not, it's just not the way we do it. I'm not making any disparaging remarks to Republic, it's just that, you know, you only have one, which is surprising. Maybe the residents are used to, just that's the way they do it. And I did see that's how they were doing it, they were knocking the container lid off and then dumping it. And it's just, you know, but like I said, if there are residents that, you know, do have the toters, I mean, if you go that route, like we have, you know, I think at this point right now, six, we actually have eight ASL trucks that can accommodate, you know, either way of doing it either way.
So you can still rear-load an ALS truck?
No, no, we would bring a rear-load truck. An ASL truck is a completely separate mechanism on the way that we pick it up. But the way it's designed right now, we would bring an ASL truck in to do the recycling because the containers are basically designed for that type of service with just one driver. And then for the trash, the way we, the way we looked at it was, we would bring a rear-load truck in there with a loader helper to do that. Now down the road, like I said, if you choose to go that route, or more and more people, you know, once, you know, once, if Republic does pull those containers out, and more and more people wanna, you know, go, you know, get them, then we'll have to reevaluate at that point right now.
So you just hit the nail on the head, reevaluate. Is that something that is a, obviously, you're going from one guy to two guys, right? Is it a cost savings, and obviously, I'm picking your brain in a public meeting, but is there a cost savings for the township to have toters across the board and for bid purposes? You guys bid out as though that would be the case?
Well, the equipment, well, no, we already have it purchased, but the equipment for an ASL truck is, you know, is like worth of $300,000, where a rear-load truck is less than that. So, I mean, the cost, you save some money in the labor part of it, but the equipment cost of it is more, you know, is less. Now again, that's from a staffing standpoint, operationally, it helps us. But from a cost standpoint overall, it could be, I don't wanna say it's a wash, but it's like, you know, you're offsetting labor costs with equipment cost. So, you know, and again, if you, you know, long-term, if the truck lasts for 10 years, you know, then, you know, you do see some savings maybe down the road, but it depends on the wear and tear and the mechanics and stuff. There's, you know, there's more maintenance on a silo truck because there's more mechanical parts to it, because you're using the arm and things like that. So from a cost standpoint, you know, without having the numbers in front of me, just knowing what I know, I would say it's maybe like, maybe a wash. But then you don't have to worry about workers' comp and other intangible stuff like that, you know, with the loader, because, you know, an arm doesn't get hurt, but a loader could get hurt and stuff like that. So to answer your question, I think, I hope I answered it, but, you know, from a township standpoint, it's maybe a break-even right now.
Break-even right now. Right, okay. Thank you.
So the way I kinda have been phrasing this conversation is, the base bid and the first option as the first discussion, and then proceeding on to a discussion about carts, which is in its own, is a bit more extensive conversation. Are there any questions about base bid or the option about where the recyclers are routed before we start that conversation?
I do not have any.
I do not have any.
Okay. So as an option, A.J. Blazinski has provided a price of $227,500 for the purchase, assembly, and delivery of trash carts throughout the township. The, this would be 3,200 carts. That's more stops than we currently have, so this would also be an inventory delivered for the construction of new homes to be delivered at a future date. I also, as a, just as a, for the purposes of securing a number, quoted 96-gallon carts all the way across the board. If we decide to, we may pursue a change order based on conversations if we want to do different sizes for senior citizens or something like that. But I bid out 3,296-gallon carts.
And are there no grants right now for this?
There are no grants for trash. There are a number of grants available for recycle carts, and that is what we acquire. So when this bid closed and I distributed the preliminary results last Friday, I indicated I was going to provide a number of options for how this could be done. I apologize for the late date. This was still warm off the printer, and I apologize that Kristin hasn't had an opportunity to see this. But as it relates to the budget situation, I first want to say that my recommendation to the Budget Committee for 2020, we're removing the revenue streams, which are from, we pay for trash and recycling from grant funding. We have a Section 904 grant from the, from DEP. We're an Act 101 mandated community. And then we also have trash and recycling fees that are collected once per year on the real estate bill that goes to homes. I'm proposing that we move those revenues and the associated expenditures off of the general fund and into what some people call an enterprise fund. You could also call it a special revenue fund. But basically, we're earmarking those revenues in a separate bank account for the solid waste program. So that's the first of my recommendations. In so doing, a draft of the budget in three forms of a draft budget for 2020, 2021, and 2022 are before you. The first set of options involves no increase to the fees assessed to the homeowners. The second two involve a $15 per year increase, basically $5 for recycle and $10 for trash service. And within those three potential budgets, there are actually four options on how you can proceed relative to carts. This new, this new fund is going to have revenue line items, which I outlined, the Act 101 grant, and the revenues from the homeowners. And it will have the expenditures, it'll have a new expenditure that even the general fund doesn't have this year. We will now have a recycle tipping fee. Historically, we've only had a trash tipping fee, but we segregated the cost, profit or loss of trash, or recycling, per ton. It's segregated out in this contract for the first time. So we have a trash tipping fee, a recycle tipping fee, we have the basic fee we pay to the hauler to collect it. We will have an equipment purchases line item, and we will have what I am calling an administrative fee to the general fund. And the reason I would recommend this is because there's more to the solid waste program than just paying the tipping fees and the recycling. Every trash day, the phone rings and our front office staff answers it. Every Thursday, I get in our Jeep and use the company Jeep and the company fuel and the company time to go out and deliver recycle carts. I feel like a portion of those costs should be recouped from those fees. And so that line item is an intra-fund transfer. It comes, it goes from the earmarked trash revenues to the general fund to pay the administrative cost for the solid waste program.
Let me interrupt you real quick. You just said, during the week, you, your phone calls for trash service, or you get, and then you said also in the same sentence, delivering recycled, the toter carts. And this is a yes or no real quick question. Do you guys, with other townships, do you have a call number where the township isn't being called for, we had a missed pickup or something like that? Do you guys ever deal with that directly, or does the township always call you?
We have a township discretion. We have it both ways. We have, we have, the townships, I mean, the residents would just call us. Or the some townships prefer it because they like to keep track of, you know, phone calls and things like that. So it's really, we can handle it either way. So if we wanna have a, we have a designated representative that works in our company that handles all municipal contracts and stuff from a customer service standpoint. So the township can call our, or the resident can call directly. It's up to you guys. It really depends how you advertise it. But we're set up, again, either way to do that. We have more than enough CSR's in our office that could handle either way.
Okay. So would that help you then, Luke?
Well, it could, it could free up staff time.
Yeah.
And I'm, I have, I have a couple thoughts on that. One is, we will never be able to eliminate the administrative costs associated with staff being involved in solid waste program.
Right.
I write, I have reporting requirements under Act 101. You know, we, someone, if it's me or a public works employee, needs to deliver carts when new houses receive certificates of occupancy. Yeah, it might save some time. The only, just, I have no numbers on that, because it's, I think it's a good suggestion, but I need to do some research.
Yeah, because it might be worth putting a prompt on the phone to say if this is a trash bait issue other than...
And I, and I didn't mention in the introduction here, when I said that staff was ready to recommend this. You know, one of the bits of due diligence we do in reviewing these would be contact other municipalities that have the service. In this case, I didn't feel it was necessary because A.J. Blazinski had a 15-year run, three consecutive five-year contracts with us prior to Republic. We have in-house the institutional memory of the quality of service they provided, so I have no concerns on that. That said, the contract includes certain penalties for failure of performance. So for example, if someone were to call and report a missed stop and they did not follow up, we could assess a penalty. If all of the designed complaint workflows go directly to them, I will never know when that complaint was received or be able to enforce a penalty if, heaven forbid, that's necessary to do so.
But I'd have to assume if somebody did try to call their company and said, you know, they never returned my call, which I highly doubt that's gonna be the case, then we wouldn't hear a callback on that. So I would think we would probably still be notified. It would just be, you know, on the second.
Plus, that was, that was because you were having issues with Republic not having pickups, so we hadn't assessed the damage to them. It'd be different from company to company, you can't really assess.
Yeah. Like I said, I need to do some research. But I have to tell you, I'm leaning towards continuing to have residents call the township. And if we train, if we, over time, train them to call the hauler directly, and then in five years, we bid it out and we have a different hauler, you're gonna have some confusion. And also, if heaven forbid, the quality of service were to fall off, I would have no record of the hauler's failure to meet the obligations under the contract. So that's where I'm at. And furthermore, that administrative overhead, I don't think the largest portion of that is complaint-taking. I'd say the largest portion of it is that this represents about 10% of my job, the solid waste program. And my salary and benefits should be recouped from a portion of what the taxpayers pay for their fees, rather than just having the general fund pay my salary.
Well then, could we get, knock both down? Just give it to, let the calls go to Blazinski and... I don't see why we won't utilize that service. I mean, if it's available.
Well, you have my thoughts.
They're gonna hear about it anyway. If there's gonna be, if there's someone that's gonna call you, and they weren't to call them, why not just have them call them? And if it's an issue, you know, we'll hear about it anyway. I mean, but that's the kind of, I feel like it's, you know, why not, let's make it simple.
That's a...
I don't think that's a decision that has to be made in conjunction with the bid though, so that's something we can defer.
Kyle, do you have any thoughts on that?
I think I'm good. I think, I think you've spelled it out pretty clearly.
Okay. So on the subject of the carts, I described that you have three budgets in front of you, and within those three budgets, there's actually four options for courses of action. At this time, my recommendation would be that the board not exercise the second option, which is purchase carts from A.J. Blazinski. But I do want to go through the four options that are available to you. I'm just gonna start with my recommendation. So on the first budget, which is the new revenue and expenses for the solid waste program that does not involve a fee increase to the residents, there are two options. One is, don't ever buy the carts and keep the status quo. It's a pretty obvious thing. You just, let's not become automation-ready. The second would be to use a portion of the anticipated 20, actually, it would be in fiscal year 2019, transfer to the, to the capital funds to purchase the carts, either from A.J. Blazinski directly or as a separate bid package. So as a reminder, each year, as we approach the end of the calendar year, we make a transfer to the capital reserve funds. And we have three capital reserve funds. We have one for the township, we have one for public works, and we have one for the police. And that's the funds they use to make their large purchases like equipment or road paving and the like. That transfer will be in excess of the current bid and a potential outcome of a second bid, where we just bid the carts by themselves. The problem with that is that that is not anticipated and would compete with public works and police departments' requests for capital improvements funds starting next year. So that would be the consequence of that. Basically, I'm telling you that I don't think the public works department or the police department would appreciate having their anticipated capital reserve monies being, competing with a somewhat unanticipated purchase of carts. So that's one option, and that's the option that does not require an increase in the rates. The other two do anticipate an increase in the rates, and one, and the difference between the two is, do we buy the carts... And one, and the difference between the two is, do we buy the carts for January 1st? Or do we buy the carts at the end of the three-year period and then rebid based on being automation ready? Even though now you ask the question, how, how attractive is automation ready in, in, in preparing bid documents? So, and the answer is, is it's, at least from the perspective of one hauler, a wash. But, so if we were to purchase for January 1, we would, we would need to rebid just the purchase, delivery, and assembly of carts with a finance option. And we could do this, it's actually doesn't, wouldn't need to be bid. We could use the Co-Stars program to purchase carts and finance them over a three-year period. Or we could save up over three years and, and pay cash in 2022, in the fall of 2022, for carts. And I mentioned that my recommendation would be not to, for the purposes of the bid in front of you now, would be not to make the, not to exercise the option to buy the carts from the apparent low bidder. My option would actually be the option B and finance. So that's the second page of the packet in front of you, where we would buy the carts for January 2020, and then we would finance it over three years. That way, we're not shorting police and public works contributions to the fund. I think we would get good terms through a totter directly, through the Co-Stars program. And also, it would address the concern of what's going to happen at the end of this year when Republic picks up all those carts. The answer will be, don't worry, a new one's on the way. And it will be, instead of a Republic branded cart, it will be a East Brandywine Township branded cart.
I'm, I'm okay with your suggestion right now of not, not going with the totter program. But I would think we would need to discuss that a little further on how we are going to handle it. I don't think that has to be an action item for today. I think the action item would necessarily be to accept the contract minus the totters for right now.
Kristin, I have a question. Do we have to exercise the totter option in the bid now? Or is that something that we could defer, investigate the Co-Stars option that, that Luke outlined, and perhaps come back to that totter option at a later point in time?
Yeah, it looks like you have, it says, under receipt of bids for the bid specs, intended the award of the contract will be made by the township, or all bids rejected within 60 calendar days from the date of opening the bids. So I think as long as you, to answer your question, I think you could award the contract for the pickup and delivery, choose not to exercise option one for the recycling, and then defer an award of bid on the cart purchase, as long as you do that within 60 days.
Luke, do you think 60 days is enough time to investigate the Co-Stars option and then come back?
Yes.
But I think from a practical standpoint, you really are going to need to know what you're doing with totters because you're going to have residents calling you saying, well, once you get an answer from Republic, if they're going to be taking their totters back, people are going to say, well, do I have to go out and buy one? Are you going to provide me one? So that communication has to be, you know, pretty quick, quickly done, once they hear that Republic is no longer your server.
I agree.
And Supervisor Winters just said something that was on my mind as well. If, if Republic chooses not, here's the problem. We have no clue how many they've dropped off, not even an idea. But I would have to guess there's at least 25% of the residents have the Republic ones. So with that being said, if Republic chooses not to pick them up, then we should somehow try to do a, I don't know if you can even do a census on this, but try and figure out if we absolutely need to, or give people the option of purchasing their own totter versus keeping the one that they got from Republic if Republic chooses not to pick it up.
I have a question. Did Republic give them to the residents for free, or did the residents have to pay Republic for them?
They got them for free, but we have to find out. Unfortunately, nobody knows how many they got. And they weren't brand new. I would say they were slightly used, because I was one of those people that found a note on a trash can at the end of my driveway from Republic saying, this is the can we'd like you to use. So.
But I think it's a mixed bag. To answer your question, Kristin, it's a mixed bag. At the beginning of the Republic contract, if you called Republic, they would not offer to give you one for free. And I think they were charging, I forget how much.
$12.
$12 a quarter, was it? Or $12 a year?
No, I think it was $12 for the cart.
No, it was, it was, but I don't know that anybody ever paid that. And I can tell you that, I know personally, because my wife went up and talked to the, to the guys when they came around, and the next week, they just dropped off a totter.
Why can't we negotiate with Republic and see if they're going to pick them up? So why don't you leave and we'll buy them off?
Buy the used ones from them.
And then we won't do anything.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
That assumes that they know how many they dropped off.
Yeah, I don't even think.
That sounds like they're not going to be picking them up because they don't know either.
I mean, that, that would, there was no contract written with the township from Republic saying that, that these cans would be provided and they need to be returned. So that would be really on Republic to go to every single household on their time to try and figure out who has, you know, and that would be, that would be ludicrous to think that that would be the case.
Well, they're going to, they're going to figure it out when they come around and do the last collection. And if it's, clearly, they're, they're labeled Republics.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no.
They know which cans or which totters are theirs. And they could have a truck follow the trash truck and just pick them up right after the collection on that last day. So anyway, I, I think I got my questions answered, so.
I'm good. And again, I stated my, my opinion. I'm, I'm good with, with go ahead and going through the contract, just minusing out the, the totter portion.
We ready for a motion?
So I think the motion should be clear that you're not, you're not rejecting the bids for the option on the cart, purchase and delivery yet. You're just, you're deferring to enter any, enter, enter decision on that part of it.
You ready for a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion. We approve the bid of A.J. Blazinski for trash and recycling collection in the amount of one, for, for three-year time period in the amount of $1,330, three, $1,330,602. And that we decline option one and defer option two for the purchase of totters.
I'll go ahead and second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Also included in your packet is, is some materials from the multi-municipal processing and marketing services. I, I am sure I will be before the board, before the end of the year, with some additional items for the, the board's consideration relative to joining this, this. It's essentially a multi-municipal agreement.
I'm sorry, Luke. What, I was.
Okay, so, so we declined, we declined the, the option of using a materials recovery facility of the hauler's choice.
Correct.
We declined because we can get a better price through the multi-municipal agreement. There will be, before the end of this calendar year, items before the board about joining that. And there's some sample, there's, there's a resolution in your packet you can review.
Got it.
So, in that, that last, the packet that also includes the three budgets.
Yep.
Obviously, that's also a legal review. And there's no action item today, and just preparing you for joining a regional group.
Thank you. All right, so now we're going to go on to the award of contract for gutters for restored at the historic structures in Bonneville Mill. And I'm going to turn it back over to Luke.
Right, so this is another advertised bid. This is an advertised bid for lumber and millwork. There's no labor associated with this other than delivery to the site. This is a budgeted item. We budgeted $27,000. We received one bid. It is from Elverston Supply, and it is for $27,500. It is the only bid. I indicate that there is one irregularity in the bid document, and that is that the bid form has a blank for you to write the price you're bidding. The bidder did not write the price in that. However, they did write the price in the contract that they would be required to execute. So Kristin, with, with your, I would defer to your judgment, but I don't think that that is a major, would disqualify the bid.
I tried to see the form, though. So you're saying the actual bid form, where they were supposed to put the dollar figure, they didn't put the dollar figure in?
Correct.
How do you know what the bid amount is then? It's just based on, they filled out the contract? Maybe they thought that was the form they had to fill out.
Right, so, so they filled in the line that said, here's the amount we're bidding in the, in the draft contract that, that they would be.
Yeah.
So I have an idea of what they intended, but it's not actually written in the correct place.
Yeah, I mean, technically, you're not supposed to have mistakes like that. It's a fairly significant mistake to not even put the amount in. But given they're the only bidder and that there is another form, that they, you know, it's almost like they're offering that as a contract. I think I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. So does the, the board have any questions about the, the bid itself or the winning bidder?
So we did, how did we do our, I mean, again, I apologize, you may have said this. How did we do our bid through?
Okay, so this, this is, we anticipated, like I said, we'd budgeted $27,000. So that is over the threshold for, for sealed competitive bids. And because this is lumber and millwork of a certain, it's a pretty specific request, because we're restoring a historic building, it was unlikely we would find a Co-Stars vendor who, who does this. So we advertised this bid. I came before the board and asked your permission to advertise it. It closed yesterday afternoon, and we received one bid.
Okay, so we did, we did follow. I, I just couldn't remember. And, and we advertised it in the paper and, and.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
You ready for a motion?
Yep.
Maybe they could just initial that then, because that's all the language. They could just have them.
Have them clarify on the price?
Or just initial, say.
Have them initial, both, you know, we initial and they initial, just a.
Excellent suggestion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the bid of Elverston Supply Company, Inc. for materials, lumber and materials at the Bonneville Mill Park in the amount of $27,500.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Luke, you're a popular item, and unfortunately, the next item is not a good one. We have the resignation of Mary Slade and the appointment, appointment of interim secretary treasurer.
Right, actually, we, there was one more procurement item, but I'm, I'm immediately going to table it.
Okay.
So another of the kind of unique purchases out at Bonneville Mill would be guttering for the, the structures that they've restored. That was an anticipated expenditure of about $5,000. So that is below the threshold for advertised bids. But it is, as a, as, as good practice, a good idea to get telephone bids. So the, the committee has been tasked with getting telephone bids for the procurement of gutters, and I do not have those for you this morning. So.
Okay.
Put it on the agenda because I anticipated it, but I do not have it.
All right, and turning over to our sad statement.
Right, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm very saddened to announce that Mary Slade, who's joined our team in, in early 2018, has announced her intent to resign next week. Mary has been an excellent asset to the community. I've enjoyed working with her tremendously over the last two years. And I, and I wish her well. Thank you for your service, Mary. I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary.
And that said, we have a few obligations under the second-class township code relative to two components of her job description. Namely, she is, at your organization meeting, appointed those duties of the secretary and those duties of the treasurer described in the second-class township code. And since we're about to have a vacancy, we need to appoint someone in the interim to do so. I am willing to serve in both capacities on an interim basis, if it's the board's will to do so.
When we, when Mary Beth resigned, was Scott the interim treasurer or secretary? I don't remember exactly what we did at that time.
I, I was.
You were? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
I was certainly the treasurer. Actually, as I recall, I actually don't recall us appointing an interim secretary, which may well have been a critical error, but it, it, I certainly was responsible as, as in the treasurer capacity.
All right. I will make a motion that we accept, regretfully accept, the resignation of Mary Slade, and then we appoint Luke Reven as the interim secretary and treasurer.
I didn't know we had an option to deny her.
Well, we could.
I agree. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now we're going to go on to, we have no subdivision and zoning application. And do we have an ordinance task force update or no?
Just a quick update. The, when we met on September 5th, with all the supervisors present, it was agreed to continue working on the scenic byways and resources ordinance amendment. David Sweet, John, yeah. Oh, brother. Kristin, help me out.
Right, I'm having a hard time hearing you. John Gat and David Sweet and I are meeting today at 10:30 to discuss it.
Yes.
And Kristin, I'll be honest with you, not to put you on the spot here, but a lot of our, our input, we would love to hear your comments and suggestions because I know that we were kind of relying on you for partial acceptance, total acceptance, or no acceptance on this, on this proposal, so.
Yeah, and we, we had a conversation before about it at a public meeting. My biggest concerns, and I'll talk to the consultants today, obviously, is that any zoning amendment or zoning ordinance provision, actually, any ordinance, has to be very specific, and it can't be vague. So, you know, the concept of these scenic, you know, what's considered scenic, to a certain extent, is subjective and, and I think still rather vague. I was actually preparing for another matter, the, I'm sure you've heard about it, it's in the paper, in West Town Township, the Cray Billy Farm, which is the largest open land on 202 going south. Toll Brothers is coming back for a second application. The, one of the conditions that was, the board supervisors relied upon to deny the first plan was an ordinance provision that required them to map out what were considered scenic vistas. And the court, Toll Brothers, said, that's subjective. What you consider to be scenic and what somebody else considers scenic isn't defined in the ordinance. It's subjective. There's no specific clarity to how we achieve that in our plan. And that's the issue, one of the issues they raised on appeal, and the court agreed. So the court struck down basically that provision of the zoning ordinance and said, unless you can clearly and concisely define what's considered scenic, how do you expect them to put this on their plan? And how do you expect them to preserve it? Because that was the whole goal in West Town. Same idea with the cluster development. And they asked you to keep the development out of the areas that are considered scenic from the public roads. Well, this scenic, you know, the ordinance that your consultants are putting together, similar idea, similar goal, you know, preserving view sheds from public streets that everybody knows are beautiful. But how you define exactly, you know, how far out you go and what you can do in that? It just, it, it really needs to be clear and concise so that everybody that picks up that book knows what the standards are. And I just want to make sure that we're at that place with the way it's been drafted.
And I would agree with you, Kristin, on that. I think, I think if we were to go to the table, and that's a big if here, with, with this, this ordinance, I would want it to be mapped out, the historic so-and-so building, the, the historic field at, at such and such. I don't think it's fair to go and say the entire street of, of, you know, John Doe Street.
Hatfield Road.
Yeah, Hatfield Road, my road, right. So, so I, I think it would be fair to, to allot an area or, or between residents 101 and 105, but I don't think it's fair, and I would agree with you, that that needs to be spelled out.
Right, I.
Yeah, because if you own one of those properties, I think you're not going to be clear to, and I know that there's distances in the ordinance. I know there's like a 100-foot and then 1,000-foot. But, and I guess this has gone to a second comment, is on a map, a more, not, not a map of the whole township that has the roads as a little line, but like a real map that has each parcel that would be impacted, what does that mean? I want to make sure the board understands what that means as far as a restriction on some, on a property owner's ability to do something. Like, it's one thing to put it into an ordinance, but what does that then equate to when that landowner comes in? landowner comes in, and their property is designated as having this scenic vista, or this scenic look? What does that mean, then, in terms of what they're able to do, within the first hundred feet, within the first thousand feet? And again, that's a, that's a policy decision, if it's written concisely, and the restrictions are clear, it's your decision as to whether or not that's an appropriate restriction, but I want to make sure the board understands what that restriction means, when it comes to then, if somebody wants to do something on their property. I think that's a hard thing to, to grasp, what it actually will result in, as far as prohibition of certain development.
And, and that's like, everything that we're trying to protect, in my opinion, everything we're trying to protect, anyway, is already protected, and another, under another ordinance, you know, like the historic building that we want to preserve the view of, you know, they're going to preserve the view of that, and, you know, I mean, my property, for example, I think would fall under the, well, depends on what season, now you can't see any, anyone, but in the winter months, you could see probably 700 feet up and, and throughout the property, and, you know, I just think that it's just a unnecessary layer of, another obstacle for a homeowner.
Sorry. Here's another idea, what, is there, has there been an ordinance such as this, where it was an optional meeting, you could go to, say you had 50 landmarks that you wanted to protect a view shed, where you could go to the resident, or the, or the owner of that property, and, and, and ask for them to consider going under this ordinance, and it would kind of be like a deed restriction on their, is there something like that?
Nobody would ever do it.
You don't think? What if you were...
No, absolutely not. Not unless they're going to get paid for it, not unless they're going to get paid to give up their development rights.
That's, I think what you're referring to is basically what we do with the open space program, so I think that covers it, gives us the ability to do that. I just, I, Jason, I'll disagree with you about, this is already covered by other ordinances, because it, we do have the historic properties issues, and those are somewhat covered by our, our ordinance on that, but just plain view sheds, there's nothing to protect those. So that was the primary intent of doing this. And Kristin, I think David Sweet and John Gatt have taken your comments into consideration, and made some significant changes to the ordinance, which I think addressed those issues, but I recognize that you may not have had a chance to review the latest...
No, I did, I did, I just, and I do think it's tightened up, I think it's, I think it's better, but I still think, Jay, there's a lot of terms that are used in that ordinance that aren't clearly defined. So it's more just, again, making sure if you're using a term, that that's going to be needed to understand how the ordinance works, you need to make sure it's defined with precision. So we'll work on it today. I guess one of the things I would think is that, you know, if they've defined, and I'm just going to pick a number, 10 areas where you're standing on a, a road in the township, and you're looking out over a property, could they almost map it and put like a, a square around the area, how far out into that property is considered to be scenic from a certain vista on the road? And maybe you literally put that onto the map.
Well, it was my...
And so that area, then, is like an overlay, that then there's certain, you know, then these restrictions kick into.
Well, we, we, they have done that, not the, the entire extent of the specific properties that are affected, but I think they've been very specific about the areas along roadways that they would deem to benefit from this kind of protection. So maybe a little more refinement to that map that we already started on would address your concerns.
Yeah, I think then, if you can clearly look at a map, and it's a parcel-by-parcel map, or a vista-by-vista map, I should say, because it might cross over boundaries of properties, then at least we've identified which properties, and which parts of properties are subject to the restrictions. I think that goes a long way in clarity, and, and not being vague.
Aren't we kind of getting away from what the whole purpose of what we started this conversation for, of the fact that we've spent a lot of money on this, and before, I thought the objective goal was to decide if we want to continue spending money, or just table it and not do it right now, because instead of, I didn't think we were going to continue spending money to try to tweak it to see how we like it, I thought it was going to be, the board go and, and listen to it, if it's something the board wants to do, then proceed, but if it's not something the board prefers at this point, then let's stop and cut it, shut it down, because it's, what are we, on 11th revision? I mean, how much money have we spent, you know, so far, trying to introduce this, without even talking to the homeowners at this point? I mean, it's either table it, because it's, we're not ready, you know, it's not there yet, or, you know...
I think, Jason, I think your point's well taken, I think if you're tabling it, you're tabling it, because there's not two members of the board that think it's worthwhile to pursue it. If there's two members of the board that want to pursue it, then the, the action item is to have, you know, me meet with consultants to try to tweak it to a point where I feel it's enforceable. I think that's the two options.
Yeah, I think that's what, I don't think that, I feel like that's not happening, I feel like we're continuing to tweak it to try to make...
I, I would suggest that since she has it in front of her right now, we give Kristin the opportunity to come back with the all-or-nothing scenario, and make that decision, just because she does have it right now. But I would agree with, with Supervisor Winters, that, you know, we shouldn't, we are at the 11th revision, or, or thereabouts, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be tweaking this almost every single month, or every other month, because things are being, if there's that much unclarity to this, then I can't see it being clearer down the road, I would rather have it 100% and not have it at all.
Yeah, we haven't even talked to the owners yet, of the property, affected property owners, and it's the 11th, 11th, 10 years.
All right. You okay with that, then? She finishes looking at what she has, and then, you know, Kristin, I would, I would, you know, and I, and I think that that Craybillie Farms is a great scenario, because if, if this is something that's getting shot down, and costing taxpayers money in court, and other townships are trying it, that's, obviously, they didn't get it right either, and we should, we should be careful on that as well.
I'm confused by the direction, then, do you want me to go ahead and meet with consultants, or do you want me to come back as a, as an agenda item with the board, and go through it and explain concerns?
I personally don't have a, I, I would say, it's in front of you right now, this is just my take on it, if it's in front of you right now, you're basically the final line, so to speak, where you can read through it, do your adjustments, and submit it as an all-or-nothing, and, and go from there. Because I think if we continue to, to sit down and think about this, and think about this, and we're not coming up with an agreement, that, as Jason just said, we are, we are starting to, you know, spend taxpayers' money on something that, that may or may not come to fruition.
And we need to, you know, identify the landowners and property owners, I mean, I would think that would be the first, to get their input, before we, you know, did 11 versions.
And, and that would be the only other thing, who, who's to, you know, who, who's playing judge and jury on, on what the, what the view sheds are? Right now, is that, is that the historic commission, or is that, is that the, the...
So it's been your planners, and then with input, I think, from the task force.
We had recommendations by David Sweet and John Gatt, who...
John Gatt.
Gatt, who drove all around the township, and they've been working on refining that map over a period of time. So they made recommendations, the, the recommendations were discussed at the task force, we eliminated some things, we gave them other suggestions, so it's, it's been a matter of working in concert, the two consultants working in concert with the task force.
And Kristin, I don't think that your, your reviewing of where you are right now, and coming back with your final version, would have any impact on the board deciding, or the, or the, the task force deciding to limit it to what once was 40, down to 20, or 10, or 15 items. I don't think that you should concern yourself with the amount, more so the verbiage of it, and what is fair for everybody, and then maybe the board can decide if we drop this down to a set number, and, and, and test it, so to speak.
Okay.
All right, so I think that that answers that. The, unless there's anything else on ordinance and resolutions, then we'll go ahead and move on to public comment on any of the agenda items, and I'll open that up to the vast crowd in front of us. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to notices. The Board of Supervisors met in executive session on Tuesday, September 24th, to discuss personnel matters, and the Uniformed and Non-Uniformed Pension Committee will meet directly following this meeting, for all those who would like to attend. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.